Wasi Mohammed.
Hello.
Thank you, thank you. Dana Rucker there, Janet Evans will not be here, Ms. Valerie McDonald Robert. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Thank you. Shirley Smith is on her way and Ms. Thompson will be out to rehave a forum.
I have a motion to approve April 24, 2025, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting. Second.
Second.
Good. Could I get a motion? Both are all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the previous received activity report for April 24, 25. So move. Second.
Second.
All in favor? For report.
Good morning Commissioners and HACP staff and guests and happy early Memorial Day weekend. The May monthly activity report, 50 HR women that we admire in the United States awards were announced and our chief HR officer Marion Willis is in the top 50, so we want to give her. Women play a critical role in shaping HR strategy, managing talent and aligning workforce initiatives. So again, congrats. Our intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Human Services has a new mental health service provider track and that stands for Three Rivers Adoption Council and they will work with our in-house clinical staff to provide behavioral health services to our LITH adults, a more enhanced in-person traditional therapy and therapeutic supervised visitation than resident clinical wellness checks along with mandatory fire drills from SART effective next month. Speaking of clinical coordination, our very own Dr. Evan Chen, our clinical coordinator partner with Open Gate Therapeutics and they coordinated an event in Caliguri with Animal Friends, yes, we had some animals there, and Hilltop Pharmacy and the seniors discussed a trauma-informed approach to cognitive behavioral therapy and clinical health support. A choice update, this resident hires in phase A, 59 residents were hired and in phase B, 36 residents were hired and one of them was from our family self-sufficiency program. And since our last board meeting, we have closed on two houses in Troy Hill, five additional home ownership closings, that's 20, in total for 2025 and there are two closings scheduled for tomorrow. Stabilizing the workforce behind the workforce, that's a governor's meeting with early childhood education and the PA Early Learning Investment Commission that we sit on, that took place in Harrisburg and did you know that childcare workers make less than yoga instructors? So we got a lot, yes, we got a lot of applause from the HACP's ADK Learning and Development Center and the HACP's Creative Model for tackling early childhood education. It was quoted that the HACP speaks for the children who can't speak for themselves and childcare is more expensive than housing and food. So congratulations to the HACP for that shout-out. Mark your calendars for the opening of the Highmark Whole Care Cheryl Gany Wellness Center in honor of Commissioner Cheryl Gany. That's June 5th from 10 to 11:30 in Allegheny Dwellings and we'll get more information in mail than your email. Kudos once again to Highmark Whole Care, they granted us $40,000 and we will be starting our indoor/outdoor movie nights for our seniors. The Cyber Bus was on hand for the Male Blood Youth Home Event this month and HUD has requested that June 12, we host 20 of the Johnstown Housing Authority Choice Neighborhood Team members here at the HACP. They're looking to find out information about how they can advance in the choice process, so HUD wants us to connect with Johnstown. A groundbreaking took place, African Queens Apartments Center Avenue in the Hill District. That will soon have 12 affordable PDD units and that will include four UFS units and commercial space on the ground floor. In addition to the PDD units, the HACP has also added $1 million in gap funding to the project. And oops.
Total units?
Total units are 12.
All the whole buildings?
The whole building.
If that's right.
That's it. You're all happy, yes. And oops, who left the goats out? Remember last year goats got out? Well, Hobo, the donkey was back on duty this year, so we've had goat doesn't be pulling on. So goatscape was back and they were doing their inside clearing of invasive plants and death as well and no goats escaped from homeless. So thanks. It closes at 2:00 PM on May 29th in Allegheny Dwellings, we will host the first of 15 back by popular demand listener post meetings with Mr. Benyon, city officials and staff. So if you're anywhere in Allegheny Dwellings, please join us on the 29th for the first listening post. May, May, uh, May 21.
Yeah, yeah.
Next week.
What's happening back? Two, two. Yeah, we have a big schedule. Yeah.
I'll send you. I'll send you the whole schedule.
And it's also on social media, but we'll send you.
I don't have any questions, anybody have any questions? Thanks for your show for your activity report, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Activity reports accepted, acknowledge a public comments. The public comments.
I'm sorry Denise, is there anybody in person to come up for a public comment? Let's do that first, please. I don't think so. There was somebody who signed up to do that, but they're not here. Thank you.
My name is Denise Wesley, I'm the compliance monitor and I will be reading the public comments. The first one, anonymous, wants the comment read aloud, yes, wants a response, yes. I deliver an 803 piece warrant to Pittsburgh Consulting, 1521. A tenant on the third floor is operating the Speed Easy or hosting frequent card parties. This apartment appears to be in violation of several terms of the lease agreement. The property manager is aware of the situation and is failed to enforce the rules regarding this tenant activity. There is a lack of proper management and as a result, anything goes. The lease agreement clearly states that management is responsible for ensuring the safety of the tenants. However, the current the current situation is deteriorating, especially as word spreads throughout the neighborhood about the Speed Easy or card party at this address. Security is aware of the increased traffic and activity and they continue to fail to do anything about it. That is the first public comment. Second public comment, Doris Martin wants the comment read aloud, yes, and wants a response, yes. I have black mold growing in my living room and bathroom. I have made calls about it and nobody has done anything about the problem. I have called the health department and all, no one came to see about it. Me and my son have been getting sick from it. Whenever someone from housing sees it, they take pictures and claim they are sending them to the person that is supposed to have them, that is also the person in charge of getting this fixed. However, it never got fixed. It's been five years. I've been complaining about this and my health is not getting any better. Neither is my son's ass. That concludes the public comment. For the first one, where is that? I haven't addressed, but I look. Caliguri, thank you. That concludes the public comment. Power of the Director and Guards, morning.
Well, as I said, we will take care of the move, but it's I gotta do something else. I mean, even though she put this comment here, I don't know if she generated work on it.
Or if she goes.
I mean, yeah. She said she lived.
We do have some information because there was a response. At the beginning, I did not read the response, but it's to my understanding that Michelle and Anthony could address it, or if you want me to, I can read the response. Okay. Would you like me to read the response?
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable? Or would you rather speak for it?
So I would say that maybe both were certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
True, thank you.
Okay, I know what happened. Okay.
Okay, that's it for the public comments? And I have a motion to approve Resolution 43?
I haven't read it, so I'll read it. My name is Denise Wesley and I'm the compliance monitor and I will be reading the resolutions. Startings of Resolution Number 43 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the Executive Director or his designated to enter into a contract with Homeland Intelligence and Protective Services to provide armed security services for the HACP Northview Heights High Rise, Northview Heights Mount Pleasant and Penford Welcome Station, Northview Heights Gym and Roving Patrols. Whereas, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, HACP, has a continuing need for security services in its high rises and families' communities as part of its plan to synthesize resources from police, private security and technology to enhance the safety and security of HACP high rises and communities, Northview Heights High Rise, Northview Heights Mount Pleasant and Penford Welcome Station, Northview Heights Gym and Roving Patrols. And now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the Executive Director or his designated is thereby authorized to enter into a contract with Homeland Intelligence and Protective Services to provide armed security services for the HACP Northview Heights High Rise, Northview Heights Mount Pleasant and Penford Welcome Station, Northview Heights Gym and Roving Patrols for a one-year contract with two one-year options and. Section two, the contract for armed security services will include a one-year total cost of $1,685,851.20. A cost of living increase will be included in year two and year three for an amount of $1,736,380.80 and $1,788,824.40 respectively. The contract will be for one year with two one-year options to extend for a three-year total cost not to exceed $5,211.56.40 and section three, the contract shall be payable for program income or moving to work in TW funds.
But I don't mind answering the first. So move. Second. Okay. Any discussion?
Your honor. So good morning. Updated this resolution is for armed guards security service. The HACP in the efforts comply with the current administration, including HUD policies to ensure fair, responsible, reasonable financially proven wage and pricing alternatives, conducted a nationwide analysis to evaluate the pay rates and administrative fees for armed and unarmed guard services, specifically for those performing services at public housing authority sites. The methodology and process of the end-up analysis considered several sources of data to include PHAs across the county, local businesses in the city of Pittsburgh and hourly rate paid for applicable security guard services of other security companies. Based on the data received and reviewed, the HACP prepared the independent cost estimate and ICE to be utilized in the procurement process for obtaining armed and unarmed guard services for designated site. The revised ICE includes an hourly rate, a benefit package and a 50% administrative fee added to the total of the wage and benefits. Utilizing the revised methodology for determining the ICE, the HACP decided not to exercise option year to the current guard company and to issue a new request for proposal, an RFP. Several firms did submit proposals and interviews were conducted for this RFP and Homeland Security received the highest ranking of responsive bidders. Utilizing the current methodology, this will result in significant cost savings of over $3 million for the authority.
Is there any, again, any questions or comments on the Commissioner's Ballroom?
No questions online.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye. Resolution passed.
Thank you.
Resolution number 44 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the Executive Director or his designated to enter into a contract with Homeland Intelligence and Protective Services to provide unarmed security services for the HACP Bidwell High Rise, Presley Street High Rise, Caliguri Plaza High Rise and the HACP One Stop Shop. Whereas, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, HACP, has a continuing need for security services and property owned and managed by the HACP to include high-rise communities and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the Executive Director or his designated is thereby authorized to enter into a contract with Homeland Intelligence and Protective Services to provide unarmed security services for the HACP Bidwell High Rise, Presley Street High Rise, Caliguri Plaza High Rise and HACP One Stop Shop for a one-year contract with two one-year options and. Section two, the contract for unarmed security services will include a one-year total of $1,345,608.18. A cost of living increase will be included in year two and year three for an amount of $1,386,419.86 and $1,428,016.38 respectively. The contract will be one year with two one-year options to extend for a three-year total cost not to exceed $4,160,044.42. And section three, the contract shall be payable for program income or moving to work in TW funds.
Did I have a motion to approve? So move. Second. Any discussion?
Your honor. Again, as I stated in the previous Resolution 43 for armed guard services, the same rationale applies to this resolution for unarmed services. We did conduct analysis to evaluate the pay rates and the admin fees for the armed and unarmed security guards specifically for public housing sites. We processed the methodology, including the data from several sources, including the PHAs across the county, local businesses in the city of Pittsburgh and hourly rates paid for applicable security guard services of other security companies. Based on that data, it was received and reviewed and then we prepared the independent cost estimate, the ICE, to be utilized in the procurement process and that once we utilized revised methodology for determining the ICE, the HACP decided not to exercise option years with the current guard company, but to issue the new RFP for our request for proposals. Several firms did submit for this RFP as well and reviews were conducted and Homeland Security was, that was received and was the highest ranking of the responsive bidders.
Any questions? Comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passed.
Resolution number 45 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the Executive Director or his designated to enter into a contract with SciCom Technology Group to provide access control installation and maintenance in new and existing sites owned by the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Whereas, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, HACP, has an ongoing and expanding need to implement advanced security technologies, particularly those leveraging artificial intelligence, AI, in an effort to enhance safety and reduce security-related expenditures across its new and existing sites. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the Executive Director or his designated is thereby authorized to enter into a contract with SciCom Technology Group to provide camera installation and maintenance at new and existing sites owned by the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. And section two, the yearly total cost for services proposed by SciCom Technology Group will include an initial one-year term with two one-year extension options for a total of three years in the amount of $4,089,227.02. A three-year maintenance cost of $52,500 and the possibility of hardware tariff amount of $464,739.45 for a total amount not to exceed $4,664,666.47. And section three, the contract shall be payable for program income and or moving to work in TW funds.
Question? Yeah, question? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. So move. Second. Discussion?
Correct. So our current access control system is outdated and unsupported. This will allow us to transition to a modern, new refined platform that will enhance our efficiency overall at HACP. It will improve our access management and reduce term costs by integrating our current camera system and access control. This will allow us to streamline users, auto logging and conduct incident response across multiple locations. This will provide us with advanced analytics to be proactive in detecting suspicious behavior patterns, unauthorized access and be able to communicate more effectively with residents and visitors. This will allow us to manage our properties more effectively. Any questions?
Any questions? Chair, for example?
So unfortunately, we had anticipated that there may be additional cost to the contract after the fact. So and during that time while we were doing that, there was a letter sent to us from the various companies telling us that our pricing is only good for 30, 50 days and that it could increase. So I wanted to pass some extra money there just in case we do have a tariff somewhere along the line.
So the 90 days that's going on right now, are we locked in? Do they lock in? Are they still going to have until we install?
It is locked in if we have purchased the equipment. So in this case, on the camera case, we have bought cameras and equipment prior. So we have it in stock to go. Once this is signed, then we will go ahead and order so many sites at a time before the tariff comes. We don't want to order a whole king. Yes, 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 yes.
It's above 10%. Well, it's. Yes, yes. It's a little bit above there.
Well, we did a proposal, that's what, this is what it was. Yeah, everything kicked up or down.
But this is up to you, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe we'll get that back.
Any other Commissioners, any questions? All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Resolution passed.
Resolution number 46 of 2025, a resolution adopting policy updates to the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh Employee Handbook. Whereas, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, HACP, is required to comply with all applicable federal, state and local laws, rules, regulations and guidelines and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh authorizes the Executive Director or his designated to take any such action to implement, modify or amend provisions of the employee handbook to reflect the aforementioned fraud and risk management policy to ensure consistency with changing state, federal or local laws and regulations effective immediately and. Section two, the updates to the MTCP employee handbook referenced above are hereby adopted in their entirety and supersede or serve as additions to the policies in the employee handbook previously approved according to Resolution Number 54 of September 2022.
Motion to approve? So move. Second. Discussion?
Your voice. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benyon, Vice Chair, Commissioners and good morning staff and attending. This resolution is as a result of, in April 2025, HUD sent a communication to the Executive Directors of the very large PHAs, Public Housing Authorities, and they were requesting a copy of the PHA's formal fraud and risk management policy. And what prompted this request was an audit that the Office of the Inspector General is conducting of Public Housing Authorities' policies on fraud and risk management. The HACP, while we have several policies in place in our handbook that reference this on, reference fraud, we don't have, we also have policies to talk about reporting, right, how to report those, but also remediation. We did not have a formal, singular, comprehensive policy to address fraud and risk management. Therefore, we determined that we need to develop a policy post-case for fraud and risk management. Hence, the resolution and the policy that we received, this policy would be effective immediately pending board approval to ensure HACP's compliance with HUD. The newly established fraud and risk management policy will be in addition to the employee handbook, which was approved under Resolution Number 54 of September of 2022. What questions do you have? So the fraud and risk management would apply system, is it more a structural, procedural act policy or does it impact the actual actions of individuals? You know what I'm saying, like you fully. Which is right. That is, that's a great question. So it is both. So it is structural in nature because it gives context to what needs to be done in the event that something took place under this area and impactful from a perspective of it talks about remediation and disciplinary action that will be related to anyone found responsible or having engaged in any of these types of activities. Did that answer your question?
Yes, so the second point is that we did have some place, maybe like scattered in different policies and this right here is compiled into one. For example, the auditor, when they come, they select randomly people to do a survey, to ask those questions. So basically what we ended up doing, we consolidated, but it's not like we done it half, it just was everywhere. So that's the summary.
And does this need to be approved by the Board? Does it need to be approved by the OIG or HUD or any other?
Well, not that, OIG and HUD, they was concerned about this, that's why it's sent out to everyone. So our peers, matter of fact, we always, you know, this way, our peers call us. So. So that's where we are.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passed.
Thank you. Resolution number 47 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the commitment of additional funds for city edges, 4% and 9% residential development. Whereas, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, HACP, the owner entity, has established and authorized its subsidiary entity, the Allies and Ross Management and Development Corporation, ARMDC, to conduct development activities on behalf of the HACP, including mixed finance, mixed income developments throughout the city of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the Executive Director or his designated is thereby authorized to obligate and extend an amount of up to $21,013,402.42 previously approved, $20,117.696 plus $895,706.42 to support the development of 110 units of mixed income housing partners in the city edge development. And section two, the Executive Director or his designated is thereby authorized to provide an additional grant amount of up to $895,706.42 which the ARMDC shall utilize to provide loan facilities to pay for the ARMDC's direct expenses for the development activities and. Section three, the Executive Director or his designated is thereby authorized and directed in the name of and on behalf of the HACP to, one, negotiate, execute and deliver all such agreements, documents and instruments and take all other actions as shall be determined to be necessary or desirable in order to affect the development activities and, two, complete any And two, complete any and all activity, any and all additional actions that are legally permissible and necessary or advisable to carry out with development activities contemplated herein. And section four, the financial gap will be paid with moving to work in T W funds and or program income. Um, sorry about completion. So move. Discussion?
Back here now, this is your first time up here, so. I was just saying.
Uh, my name is Patrick Roseler, I'm the senior development manager in Development One Banking Company. Uh, this resolution is to increase funding for one of H A C P's co-development project, City Edge, which is located in the Lower Hill neighborhood. Um, and our partner developer is Midpoint, sure, for companies. It's a hundred and one units of mixed income housing, including ninety-two project-based vouchers, forty-three of which are solely just served as replacement units, um, it would be Bedford short initiatives. The project also has commercial stations and a garage. The project originally closed in May of twenty twenty-three and started construction. Um, soon after starting construction, a previously undisclosed underground utility line for Duquesne Light Company was discovered. Um, this caused a six-month delay in the project while Duquesne Light Company relocated the utility line. The delay resulted in a number of increased project costs, um, most notably six extra months of construction loan interest, six extra months of, uh, insurance and property. Um, the, our co-developer, Midpoint, has come to H A C P and asked us to help cover eight hundred and ninety thousand, um, of the increased costs. Midpoint is also working with the Urban Development Authority, um, to have them increase their, uh, commitment as well.
So this is not a gap finance, we are forty-nine percent ownership, so it's still just a gap finance.
Tell me again, why, why six months extra interest and six months extra insurance? Coffee I'm taking in here.
The project closed in May of twenty twenty-three, um, and we, you know, immediately expended a large portion of our construction loan. Um, so we did have to pay interest on that during the six months, even though there was not construction happening. Um, and insurance, you know, the, the property was under construction for six months. And, um, I will add that the, um, utility line, um, actually serves the P P G paint for it now. Um, so it's not just a regular, you know, electric line, so it was a really complicated big project to have it, um, being removed. And it was not, um, previously disclosed, so there, there was no way to, you know, account for this in the end of the project, it's original budget.
So you said managed to, of the units are for P P G vouchers?
Yes.
And forty-three of them will be used for relocation from Toronto?
Forty-two, ever.
Relocation. So who? We had on at least the R F D A for the property manager.
No, we do have property manager, I believe.
It's, it's gonna be track.
Right.
It's gonna be track.
The, um, the property manager, um, contract is with our co-developer, Midpoint, and they have contracted with track.
So we, even though we, we're not the primary, uh, we have forty-nine percent ownership. Uh, the general manager, make my turn, right? Uh, the management partner is, uh, uh, Midpoint, attracted the, um, with master, manage the place, and we are the cash flow and, and our money will be paid back.
So when we open the application process for those other units that are going to be available after the new forty-two of relocation, that process will be done from housing authority, the residents have to go on the housing authority website and get on the waitlist.
Get on the waitlist, right.
For forty-nine units?
Uh, I don't understand the calculation there, but I think it's fifteen, uh, market waiting is out of there. And, um, they remain between that forty-two, whatever that delta is. And I don't map that fast right now, but, but we would have about twenty-two or five participants who will be low pitched to the meeting.
Will those individuals be able to apply directly through the management company as well?
No, only the, somebody correct me if I say this wrong, uh, only the people who are applying for the market waiting is.
Can apply directly through the management company?
Right, the others.
Have to go through how?
Yeah, because we will put up a website and they can apply.
And they can apply. And my issue with this and the reason why I'm asking these questions is because when we launched this application, we're going to get hundreds and hundreds of applications, and we're only going to be forty-something plus units for residents to even be selected for. So that's a big problem because then those people just stick on the waitlist forever and not probably looking for other housing opportunities.
Well, a method that we use, if you're right, there's development. We get hundreds and hundreds and thousands. And then over time, we start curbing the list, the list start reducing, uh, people start moving out. Uh, we look at probably three to five percent, um, channel rate, but you're like, they're doing this forever. And that's why we courage the list. Uh, but sometimes people can be on other lists, you know, you can be on one list for one development, but you can select, at least select up to three.
Right, it's eleven to thirty, and then whichever comes first.
And, and, and then when we, we open the, uh, the project based waiting list, it's waiting, you know, based upon what purposes we have. And then it's a random, randomly selection process in the computer system that they're quite good force.
So when you say based off our preferences, what, what do you mean by that?
Well, we have different preferences. I don't, I don't remember one for, for just developer. But some, we have twenty-four months working preference, even work for twenty-four months, you get a highway, illegal to, and it's able, or you're just saying, some developers do not have it. Some management companies, they stay with, you know, based upon what the waitlist select, based upon random selection.
So we need to advertise that information to the public so people aren't just wasting their time and applying getting into the unit if they haven't worked for twenty-four consecutive months or know they're not a senior of sixty-two years and older, that information might advertise. I think we should have a better system so that it works for people because we already know there's a house shortage.
I believe in, uh, in the application process, it is, uh, there's even a mechanism, I have my key.
Okay. And this, um, commission is also a part of the, um, A C O P, um, that we have. That is also online, in addition, commissioner, um, our Bedford residents will have first choice, um, for the newly developed units. And if our Bedford residents, if we can't fill it with the Bedford residents, then it gets open to the public. And it doesn't go on the general housing choice voucher waiting list. It goes on the waiting list specifically for City's Edge. So each, um, project-based voucher development has its own waiting list. And people can apply to as many waiting lists as they want to, but our residents in Bedford would have the first option.
They'll have the first option, will they be subject to the frac content as well?
No.
Okay, so they'll be able to automate.
Okay, and there's a full team that's working with them, um, uh, to include asset management, uh, residents self-sufficiency, um, uh, development. And then there's, um, HUD requires us to have, um, community partners with that. So there's a whole slew of team members, a variety of team members from different entities that are working with the residents to educate them, to let them know what's happening there, resident meetings. And we need on a weekly basis, um, internally, to discuss this and go through to make sure that, um, everybody knows what's going on and we have a whole chart of, um, moves and everything, so we very carefully monitor this.
On City Edge, you said it's in the Lower Hill, right? And so we're not really displacing people and moving on matter support?
No, ma'am, it's pretty much adjacent to.
It's very close, it's a close, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, walking distance, I think.
And it is that, uh, construction has to be seen in August of twenty twenty-six, so there is some significant time on board.
But I, but I think we will send, uh, K W and management, if you did ask this question, a question regarding these developments, what are the purposes? You know, some adopt our purposes and some just keep the same. So we, we will outline it to you guys.
Okay.
I love the love ring here. Okay, all in favor, aye. Any opposed?
No.
Resolution, thank you. Resolution number forty-eight of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the executive director or his designate to utilize an existing contract with frame technologies through Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Program for the installation of, of a building automation system, BaaS controls, and equipment at Presley High Rise Amp Seventeen Bedford dwellings Amp O two. Whereas, the housing authority of the city of Pittsburgh, H A C P Board of Commissioners, authorized the purchase of waters for the Presley Street High Rise and Bedford dwellings under resolution number eighty-three and resolution number eighty-four of twenty twenty-three respectively. And now therefore be it resolved by the board of commissioners of the housing authority of the city of Pittsburgh. Section one, the executive director or his designate is hereby authorized to issue a purchase order in trade in the not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for the installation of building automation system BaaS, controls and equipment at Presley Street High Rise Amp Seventeen and Bedford dwellings Amp Two. And section two, the amount shall be paid from program income and or moving to work in T W funds. Today, I would like to move, so move. Second, second. Discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Morning commissioners, my name is Jim Foley, I'm the director of construction and renovation. And the reason, uh, we want to put a building automated, automated system in is because right now we have a system that's put in, it's working fine.
But what it uses is, uh, their system uses variable frequency drives, and they're not intelligent, they run based on what? So we can optimize the, I mean, building automation system, I mean, because of the more than you do, I mean, the more the, and actual conditions like lower rating. I think there's some energy efficiency with it because we have precise control over the system of a building automated system. And for the building automated system can also do that false and diagnostic, uh, situations early, which helps us detect anything and it will send the word to our engineers via remote, um, if you remotely monitor, so they can get this information remotely. And where that's beneficial, we have lots of insights there, so they're not spending their time traveling and they can adjust it remotely. Uh, and initially it'll, um, log that up for reports, so we can plan the main for this system. Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution, thank you. Resolution number forty-nine of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing revised awards for two oh nine nine street and eight hundred and ten avenue by Hewlett Properties Inc. under the twenty twenty-four P P V gap financing request for proposals program. Whereas on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the housing authority of the city of Pittsburgh, H A C P, issued a request for proposals number six hundred dash twenty-two dash twenty-four, R F P representing the funding availability under the project-based voucher P P V and gap financing, P P V gap financing program. And now therefore be it resolved by the board of commissioners of the housing authority of the city of Pittsburgh. Section one, the executive director or his designate is thereby authorized to issue contingent commitment of thirty P P Vs and funds not to exceed three million dollars in gap financing, one million five hundred for two oh nine nine street and one million five hundred and eight hundred and ten avenue respectively, and begin project underwriting negotiations with Hewlett Properties. And section two, the P P V units will be funded by the H A C P housing choice voucher, H C V program, and the gap financing will be financed by moving to work in T W funds. Motion? So move. Second, second. Discussion?
I'm sure, morning commissioners, my name is David. Development, uh, twenty, twenty-four, last year, Hewlett Properties posed two project projects for five hundred and five hundred program. However, uh, the name of the property is called East Ohio Landing and then Trip Hotel. East Ohio Landing is Comfort Inn and then Trip Hotel is a hotel. They wanted to convert those two, uh, large places for populations, but in case the community opposition, financial liability issue, and site control issue. So they, they submitted a revised proposal this year, early this year to replace those two properties, but still coming a six-minute, uh, five hundred, five hundred unit program. Those are hundred nine nine street and eight hundred and ten Avenue properties in downtown. So this, this resolution will authorize revised ten twenty-four hours of a P P V gap financing to Hewlett properties with two downtown sites, hundred nine nine street and eight hundred and ten avenue. Any questions?
How many, how many units?
Uh, hundred nine nine street, forty-three units, and then eight hundred and ten avenue, that's forty-four units. The missing properties has been used for corporate, uh, uh, larger place for like, you know, today. So if this is successful, uh, very far, Department of Human Services, uh, will be processing for people who are going to be homeless. Uh, they will dedicate them, and, uh, right now, this is the first part is, is there to be completely financed? But if we able to make this happen, it's going to be a big deal for the homeless population also moving housing, uh, for housing downtown.
So these properties are being used for individuals that spend some time in this?
We still working through that process, I can talk about it later, if there are some concerns.
Okay.
Um, but we're not at that point right now, we're just trying to, uh, move it to a point where you can, uh, when you get the building, you can start the process.
Okay.
So, yeah, there are some financial discussions, if you want to talk later.
What time I think we're going to manage?
Yeah, uh, they're looking at, they're, um, aiming at, uh, September, flu, this year, so those units are using this in very good conditions, they're excellent condition. So, uh, I mean, we can inspect the properties before we close our financing and P P V head contract. So they believe they can complete everything by anybody this year. Definitely five hundred and five hundred every night, two hundred this year, so.
So, um, I know we all understand five hundred and five hundred.
Yes.
So I want to have, uh, one more share. You were talking about five hundred, so I guess know what we're talking about.
Sure, um, so five hundred, five hundred is the initiative that the housing authority, Allegheny Housing Authority, and Department of Human Services have to address homelessness, um, the county exec has a, um, mission to make sure that five hundred units would be available for the homeless population by the end of the year. And we're at about, what, I think we're at about, what, three, three hundred and fifty?
One thousand three, so that's.
Three hundred, what is, what is, three fifty, yeah. Yeah, we know about the normal, yes.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah.
I got you.
All in, what's my name? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's do some questions.
Right here.
Resolution number fifty of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the executive director or his designate to approve the renewal of Adobe license for Endtype. From inside public sector for the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Whereas the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh relies on Adobe software, Adobe Acrobat Pro and Adobe Sign for essential operations. Including processing digital applications, certifications, payments, contracts and other business documents requiring electronic signatures and form forms. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the executive director order is designated is hereby authorized to approve the renewal. Of the Adobe licenses from inside public sector in the amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars seventeen cents. And section two, the total amount of seventy-two thousand six fifty-seven seventeen shall be payable for moving to work. M T W and or program income form.
Motion to the third? Second, second. Especially.
Director Matty? Good morning commissioners, um, H A C P team and attendees. H A C P utilizes Adobe Acrobat um, to create and manage digital documents. That are essential for communicating with our community member partners as well as for staff internally within H A C P. Um, we also use Adobe Sign, uh, which is a computer program that is crucial for uh, obtaining electronic signatures. On various documents that used to be on paper before, uh, including applications, contracts, um, internal requests. Um, over the past twelve months, uh, we have completed seventeen thousand five hundred and nine signatures. Um, using Adobe Sign. And uh, you can imagine that's seventeen thousand papers that we didn't have to print new sign. And we continue to grow in that direction. So uh, we also partnered with um, all departments within H A C P to understand their needs and continue to evolve. Um, therefore, uh, we identified that the specific number of licenses uh, will be needed based on the staff roles. To ensure that we're utilizing stool to achieve the goal that we're um, targeting. Um, therefore, uh, the renewal uh, requires uh, following licenses, uh, two hundred and twenty-five Adobe Acrobat. To our all of H A C P, that gets used based on uh, each department's allocation. We also use um, Adobe Creative Cloud. And that, what that is, is Adobe Photoshop and Adobe Designer that is used by our communication department. To ensure that our um, tablets and flyers and postings on, on uh, the social media. Um, are done in a political and professional manner. Um, the uh, last but not least important part of um, this license that we are obtaining from Adobe. Uh, is called the Adobe Sign. So uh, we have moved into um, Adobe forms in the web. Um, and that allows our tenants and landlords to download these uh, forms and fill them out. Sign them and send them without having to install a computer program on their uh, computer or on their phone. So it allows it to be self-standing and they push it through to us to get processed by our departments. Um, this is what this whole uh, suite of software is doing. Um, we're renewing it for uh, twelve months and uh, the cost is seventy-two thousand six hundred fifty-seven and seventeen cents. Um, I appreciate your approval, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to address them.
I don't, I actually like the product, it also gives you a receipt when you sign it. So if you are looking for that document, that's direct to their email and that will have you, they sample pass. I'm just curious, excuse my technological desire, but um, is there another license? Does this include storage? Does this include data, um, whatever, capture, whatever? And to what degree, or do we need another license? I'm just curious.
It's an excellent question and the answer is yes, includes terabytes of data. So all of the digital forms that have been processed gets created and stored in a dedicated repository. That we as H A C P can only access. Um, in fact, the, the system provides an audit trail, you can go back in history. Um, get a report, an audit report, document to help us process. And yes, it is included, the storage of that um, data as well as data about the data. And we, we pretty deal on performance, you know, you, you know, just have some stuff through residence, they have barcode. We use every uh, capability of technology out there to uh, uh, make sure we can follow accurate information. Especially when you're in discussions.
Thank you. Any more questions? All in. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution based?
Resolution number fifty-one, twenty twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the executive director is designated to purchase a forklift and a box truck. Whereas the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, H A C P, has determined that it is necessary to purchase a forklift and a box truck. It's support operational needs throughout the authority. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. Section one, the executive director order is designated hereby authorized to award a contract for the purchase of vehicles. And the purchase and installation of additional equipment under the terms of the common law. The Pennsylvania Department of General Services Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for a hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. And section two, the total amount shall be payable for program income and or moving to work with T W fund.
Any other motion to the third? So move. Second, question, the question.
Director, let's see, I run the issue.
Morning commissioners, good morning colleagues and good morning those running electronically. As Dr. Lex mentioned, this uh, resolution is requesting the approval to purchase a forklift and a box truck. Um, we utilize the forklift to maneuver material that we purchased to service our residents and our units. And we use the box truck to be sure we're prepared for events such as community days, uh, ground breakings, brand openings. Um, if approved, we'll be able to retire our current forklift lift, which is twenty-six years old and has exceeded its useful life. And the new box truck will serve as a replacement for the box truck that was retired in twenty twenty-three. What questions do you?
That's a great question. I just know what I'm finding.
I don't have any, anybody else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution focus? I believe. Second, report?
Okay, we uh, provide, we'll work with the executive report and comprehensive operation report. Uh, we just want to say, in our use of resolutions, uh, when you begin to see, as we said before, have committed to A I. To improve systems, um, so later, someday they will take out the suddenly A I. A I is going to reduce costs. I'm not a good friend of A I, A I, um, but our staff is moving in that direction.
It's here.
But however, we would not, we do not, so yeah, get out of control. Outside of that, we got lots to do and I'm thanking Ford for the direction. Residents for the input, the staff, continue to what you're doing and we continue to be leaders in this community. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Doing the business? Any other motion to adjourn the meeting? Second. Move, second, third. Four, second.